Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 17th City Council Meeting. Clerk, can you please cover all?
Alderman Sante.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman McClatchy.
Here.
Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Alderman Strach.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Miller. Present.
Please stand for the place.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, on the nation under God, in the soul of the religion of the Constitution of America.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with public comment. Is there any public comment at this time or anything that's not on the agenda this evening? No public comment? Moving on to presentation, McKenna County Conservation Foundation by Pam Altough and Jim Heisler.
Our presentation is up on the monitors, and I want to thank all of you for allowing us the opportunity to appear before you this evening. It's Dave and I, Pam Altough, this is Jim Heisler. We are here this evening as members of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation, and we're going to try and remind you about the distinction between the Conservation District and the Conservation Foundation, and why the foundation is such an important, responsible, and necessary component of our conservation mission. First, however, I want to introduce our Executive Director and Leader of our organization, Shawna Flagle, who is here with us this evening.
Hi, everyone. I just want to reiterate what Pam said, and thank you for allowing me to speak here today.
And if we go to the next slide, I also want you to take a look. I'm not going to read the slides to you, you all have the catheter to reading. But our board members are inaugurated on this slide, and I want you to know that our board includes this wonderful, multifaceted, diverse group of people. We have a wildlife biologist, a former NIPSE, the Northeastern Illinois Planning Commission Resources Director, and green infrastructure specialists. We have an IDNR natural resource specialist. We have two former educators, an award-winning salesman, two realtors from opposite sides of the county, one who also is a degree to businessmen with also degrees in finance. We have a banking management professional, a former Conservation District Board Member with a degree in public administration, two current county board members. And so we're a unique kind of mixed-use group of 11. We have six men and five women, but we all share the same passion for preserving and restoring McHenry County's public open space, natural resources, water, and wildlife. And I know here that while the Conservation District was established in 1971, the foundation wasn't created until 1999, and was operated for almost 20 years solely by a group of volunteers. It wasn't until 2018, when in collaboration with the district, the foundation was able to hire our first Executive Director, Shawna. She's been with us since 2018. She's leading us in the right direction. The next slide is ultimately my favorite slide, because I think it depicts the difference very simply between the Conservation District and the foundation. So on your right, right, you see left, whatever, you see the simple tomato sandwich here, right? It's, you know, satisfying, and it's attractive, and it's substantive, and it's a good meal, and it provides the basics. Next to it, you see the club sandwich, which includes tomatoes, but has all the extras, right? The lettuce, the tomato, the maybe special mayo sauce, bacon, avocado, et cetera. So it's what provides the amenities to the tomato sandwich or the Conservation District. And I want to point out that at this particular time, the district has kept their property taxes extraordinarily low. They have only taken the full levy twice over the past 10 years. And of those tax revenues, 89% are what operates the Conservation District. 60% of those dollars are used to pay back our debt service, and the remaining, only 40%, is what we use for general operating funds. The foundation, on the other hand, basically provides the extras for the district, for the necessary bridge between the gap between the public funding and the increasing cost of maintaining public land, re-establishing our wetlands, wildlife habitats, quality recreational opportunities, and offering educational programs. The foundation is needed to access substantial available grant funds that, as you know, taxing bodies don't, can't access, and to date, we've raised over $4.5 million. The foundation also is and was the legal entity that was permitted, again, as you all know, taxing bodies are prohibited, from taking a position on our referendum. We've passed two successful open space bond referendums, which garnered $141.5 million, which purchased much of our public lands. Speaking of the public benefit of all of those lands, I'm going to turn it over to the professional member half of this group, Jim Heisler.
Oh, me? Let's look this one up. Thank you. Thanks, Pam. So again, kind of reiterating a little bit of what Pam said, we're the parts, we're the sister company, if you will, of the district, providing funds. So yes, they already provide operational funds, they raise after taxes, but what the foundation does is it fundraises to provide extra projects. I think if someone thinks, go ahead and slide. Thank you. So here are our 42 different sites that we have, these spaces that are available, yes, down the front of us as well, lots of land across the county, and that's the important part here. Why do we all move here? Why do I live here? You know, most of you know me as the head of the Realtor Association, so why am I here from the foundation side and ecology and all that? Because that's why we all live here, because we love the land. Everyone knows, I go bike riding all the time. I use the Prairie Trail. Who says that? It's the district, Conservation District. So we're all working together. Real estate people can be conservationists, we can have similar interests. I'm a beekeeper, so I mean, we all cross over the things we like. The foundation is here to help raise funds, to put on extra programs, extra projects, support those projects. We are reintroducing mussels into the river that runs through Glacier Park. That's something that took place with foundation support. So that all happens, the district can't support and fund on their own with the money they have. The foundation raises funds to do those things. The remeandering of the creek that runs through, why does it never sink? It used to be straightened out. It was crazy meandering, and then the farmers came in 100 years ago, straightened it all out, they could plow crops, and we realized that that fast-moving water is washing away all of the animals and creatures and things that used to live in that creek. So 15 years ago roughly, I think it was, they remeandered the creek, and now we're reintroducing mussels that were there that couldn't survive when the creek was running too quickly. So it's those kinds of things to redevelop land, put it back the way it once was. So next slide. And this is the usage? Yeah, we're going back to that one. Thank, one more, head forward. There's a middle one.
There's one in between. You saw it.
Let me have one more. There, okay, sorry, thank you. So these are staff showing the usage of the park. No surprise to anyone, what happened during COVID, people had to go outdoors, where did they go? They went to the park. So the district went up, and you can see the massive amounts of usage at the district sites. And where does funding come from to keep those projects and things going? The foundation raises it, as Pam talked about. Next.
And I'll just add in at this particular point, too, we have not seen since COVID, we have not seen a decrease in the usage. Once people found those Conservation District sites, they continually went back and continued to use them.
So just briefly, from the oak survey that was done, very important oak survey. So I'm just going to, I'm not going to read y'all the highlights, we're going to keep moving. But in two experiments, we found that over 90% of acorns, artificial cactus located in dense, tall, herbaceous vegetation, were eaten by white-footed mice or meadow bull. So all those acorns are dropping aren't rebuilding the forest that have been chopped down and cut down because the squirrels have even left, because there aren't even enough acorns for squirrels, much less enough for them to, the acorns to grow. Other factors at work, often through drought, climate change, disease, habitat fragmentation, aging of mature trees, reaching the end of their life cycle. So that means since 2005, 17 years ago, McHenry County has lost additional 86 acres of mature oak. That's about 65 football fields worth of visual oak tree. These are things we are working on at the foundation to provide funding for the district to be able to replant. We've been working with Stryker, they brought out teams of their employees to help replant. That was a very fun day of their team replanting some trees. I'm going to let you cover this, Pam.
Just again, another visual for you to look at, and very small and little, strict things in the amount of taxes that go to Conservation District from property taxes. So it's really about two cents, an average house, maybe $150,000 median pays about $150 a year to the Conservation District for operating expenses. So they really have done a phenomenal job in maintaining and keeping costs down, but even more than important for the foundation to step up and be able to provide those funds so that people get the amenities and the maintenance that they anticipate from taxing government bodies. Next slide. Just again, yeah, just again, some of the wonderful pictures, we have huge amounts of volunteers that come out from corporations, the Northwestern Hospital, Stryker, as Jim made reference to, and other major corporate corporations, who come out and do workdays and help us clean huge amounts of sites. I know that you all read in the paper, it was a big, huge achievement for us. We actually obtained the Lakota Camp property, huge amounts of space from the Wisco, got a really good deal on that property, but we have to clean it now. You know, huge old buildings that were there that are in dilapidated condition, that you know, you're aware.
That's the foundation. The foundation acquired that property, not the district. The foundation, the district couldn't get it, the foundation could, through funding. So there's a foundation that has it, we own it right now, we're working to clean it up, and then we will be turning it over to the district. That's the partnership that we have. But it's maintaining that and getting that property, that was a huge asset.
It's a huge project.
Congresswoman, say underwood, that's wrong, yeah, yeah.
Underwood, yeah.
Loan underwood.
Underwood.
Helped us bring in the ten dollars to help clean up the district site as well, so there's more money coming, and we keep working with our partners, our crops, and that's why we're here tonight, just to help remind you of the difference between the foundation and the district, to put funds together to help keep our open spaces open and keep them clean and useful. And you see, maybe if you use the bike path like I do, they, we've repaved sections of it, right, for the jewel in McHenry here, that whole section's been repaved, it's beautiful, it's heaven bad, go check it out, long gone.
And just in closing, and we'll go through the rest of the slides, because there's not really anything we want to point out we've said at all, but the foundation really is the philanthropic arm of the Conservation District, and we want to educate you so that when you have an opportunity to talk to your constituents, and your neighbors, and your family, that you can explain to them why it's so important. McHenry County has an extraordinarily unique nature, land surface, we all know that, and we want to keep it that way. One of the reasons why we are only one of five Conservation Districts in the entire state of Illinois, and we are the largest, and it was done on purpose, because we have unique features that we want to preserve in perpetuity. So thank you much for the opportunity. I hope you share a little bit of what you learned tonight with other people so that they understand the importance and support the foundation as much as they do the district. Thank you.
If you do, I can hand out this.
Yep. Just wanted to, we'll leave them with the mayor, if anybody is interested, you certainly can take another look.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Of course, they're ready for questions from.
Yeah, one of the things, just for correction, and I don't know if you're doing that by countywide or whatever, but that 15 cents, what is ours, about 7%? 7 cents?
8.
6.8%. So.
Ours is 2 cents. That's 2 cents.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, so people don't look at that and think we get 15 cents, we only get half of that, or less than half of that, a lot more goes to schools. But the thing I want to bring up, and we're talking about your neighborhood as well as mine, Pam, and that's what splits us between the jewel, which is Boone Creek. And there's a lot of property that is west of Boone Creek and north of Dartmoor, a lot of wetlands areas out there that really need to be conserved. It's not really good for development. And Boone Creek is a very important tool to the city of McHenry, not just for that area, but all the way to the downtown and the Riverwalk. We spent, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars, everybody uses part dredging, the Boone Lagoon, and all that comes down through Boone Creek. I mean, you take a look at just where I live, where the bend is in Oakwood, and I can show you pictures from 20 years ago of what it looks like now, and how much is filled in, with just silt. And we had a mayor that probably 40 some odd years ago put in a stone dam back there to help back some of that silt, and it did a great, phenomenal job. It filled in that lake area, it held it back, but the thing is, is it's all filled up now, and it's coming over that dam again, and what we're spending to get dredged further down is going to wind up being affected by all that that it comes out. I mean, years ago, I researched Boone Creek as far as where it starts, and it just, I don't know how many people know that, but I mean, it goes all the way, I think it's the other side of Wonder Lake, north of 120, comes down all the way to Crystal Lake, the northern end of Crystal Lake, and then curves back around. I mean, that's a lot of silt that gets picked up over the years. And I would hope that the foundation might take a look, and again, Pam would be an expert as well as I, as far as what we've seen in changes over the years. Because I think, I know we did a survey, I think it was probably about 22, 23 years ago, and I was just astounded by the different types of fish, little tiny fish that are in there, not just the normal, you know, carp or northern or bass or anything else, but just little tiny, names I've never heard of. So I mean, there's, as far as the ecosystem, there's a lot to be saved there and a lot to be cared for.
Do we know this? And we, the foundation happens, but the Army Corps has been very much engaged in the silt and filling in, in that entire area, so they've been working with the Fox Waterway and the Riverwalk, and so we should probably become a partner to those conservation.
Great.
Yes.
Any other questions?
None of our big projects, we're very proud of, is the TACM-TAC purchase of wildlife and finally having that designated as a federal nature reserve.
We gave you the shortened version. We didn't go into disability and the outreach we made with people to get out and expose them to the outdoors as well. Do them if I get it right.
So thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the explanation, the analogy of the sandwiches, because I got stuck on that myself. So thank you very much, I love it, you know, tomato-mayo, you know, sandwich was amazing, and the club sandwich was better. What can we do, because you know that we're all about building relationships, what can we do to help you? I think our main purpose, you're the second of 17, we hope, presentations, and again, it's to remind our elected officials how important the Conservation District is, how it increases our property values, what a great financial management job that they're doing, and we need people to understand, and to understand, yes, the difference between a Conservation District and a forest preserve. And it's a little bit of a nuance, but it is a huge difference. We have unique land features that are unlike any in the rest of the state of Illinois, and we need to preserve that, not just forest preserve, we need to ensure that those resources remain in place. So that's how you can help us. If there's any opportunity, as a realtor, as a realtor, you have, you know, a natural audience when you bring people into the community, and we would ask that you share all of that information with them, and encourage them to get involved. We actually have kind of fun events, and planting trees is fun, and reintroducing mussels is not so much fun, but we have biceps, did you guys know that? We have biceps in McHenry County. We got a grant to help find a natural habitat and reintroduce biceps, and it's a Prairie View.
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley, it's a Pleasant Valley.
Prairie View is our education center, children and biceps don't miss.
But, I mean, we have unique opportunities that McHenry County, because of its location and because of what we have, that bring in unusual aspects that we need to share with everybody in the room here.
Well, you don't answer that, so it's your question. We understand that when we go out and start to promote ourselves, the foundation to start to ask for funds and do fundraising for these projects, that sometimes you all, as leaders in the community, will hear some of that feedback of, oh, the foundation came out, and the people that we're pitching may not fully understand, it's helpful that you understand, that can help fill in some of those gaps, and, oh, they are reputable, they work with the foundation, the foundation works with the district to raise funds, provide funding for projects, it's just helpful to get that third-party verification, as I call it.
So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions coming? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Have a good evening. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, item 6A through 6D. Is there any items that the council would like to pull for separate consideration? Alderman, question?
Number D, I'm sorry, consent agenda, D.
Okay, any others? See none? I am looking for a motion to approve 6A through 6D, and then 6E through 6J. Alderman Miller?
I'll make a motion to approve 6A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J.
Thank you. Alderman Strach. Second. Discussion on these items. See none? Clerk, please cover all.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Sante?
Yes. Thank you, council. The item that was pulled by Alderman McClatchy is 6D, it's a budget amendment and award of bid for Veterans Memorial Park entryway. Approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-24 parks developer donation budget in the amount of $34 million, no, $34,842, and an award of a bid for the installation and of the redesigned entryway of Veterans Memorial Park in the amount of $204,842.
I'll take the $34,000.
Yeah, yeah. You would.
IRU isn't good, I mean, I'll tell you.
Alderman, question? Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Back in 85, we recreated that old park in the Veterans Park, and I think it's long over to the, to the front entrance, I think it's well over there. And I think what showed us so far looked really good. The only concern I have are the two evergreens, they're huge, they're 30 foot tall, they're going to get bigger and wider, and they take away from that whole entrance, they take away from the zee, to that's supposed to be the focal point. People driving by can barely see it because those trees are getting so big. So, I don't know, just replace those smaller trees. When we first put them down, back in 85, they were like 5 feet tall, so now they're just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It's just, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
We absolutely will do it right, and let me take those, our trees out and put something smaller, and we've done that in the past, there's to be a couple more there, and we took out, put like some azaleas in there that were, that were more transparent. So we'll make sure that we address those slightly in the landscaping aspect of our project.
I'm talking about the two, I think they're 9.3 on the, the two big ones.
Yes.
So we're taking those down.
We'll take a look at what exactly, I'll make sure we go out there.
Okay.
And we'll do a comprehensive look, and we've done that so far, because if they're intrusive and blocking the front entrance of the park, the whole point is to create that entrance.
Exactly.
We do that wall, give a designation to the service organizations, and then put the nice sign to really call it that's park, it's a part of our community, that entryway needs to reflect that in what we, what we've accomplished there.
Okay. Any other questions coming?
It's like, $204,000 is a lot of money, coming out of developer donation funds, although that's what it's there for. However, what do we have left in the developer donating funds? And it's one of my questions, and another statement I'd like to make is the fact that there have been times that we have done parking lots in parks department areas and using MFT funds, when actually they should have probably had parks developer donation funds, and what that does, then it depletes from the street programs and everything else. So, again, just not a question, but a statement, but the question is, is what do we have left in the balance after we spend this?
After we spend this?
Yes.
We've been, well, we've had other projects that are happening, so having an accurate number right now, we had $1.4 million before we started any projects this year, to, you know, we take it with 1.2, there's a couple other projects that we've accomplished, we're probably in the million-dollar range, maybe a little less than that for parks developer donations, probably a little less than that, and there's some projects that we haven't accomplished yet that will also come from that fund this year, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions coming?
No.
All right.
With a motion for 6D, as presented.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes, I'll move that we approve 6D, and hopefully the director will get back to us in a later day.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Alderman Sante?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Clerk, please cover all.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Sante?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is an individual action item, 7A, is a liquor, class A liquor license for the courthouse at 1401 North Riverside Drive. Motion to approve a class A liquor license to River Pearl LLC DBA, the courthouse located at 1401 North Riverside Drive, and if granted, an ordinance increasing the number of class A liquor licenses from 41 to 42. I'm looking for a motion, 7A.
Alderman Strach? Motion as presented. Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion by council. Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, the only question I have is, is what are we looking at approximately opening up this place? It's been under construction for quite a while, so. It's been a unique process and a project, there's no doubt about it.
So if I could just jump in real quick?
Yeah.
So there's four members of the family here tonight, I don't know if they're all family, but John, John here is, he's the construction project manager on the site, so he'll be able to answer that question, hopefully, to you. Then Dimitri Kopyly is the owner, so.
And then behind us, Yekos Kopyly, who's also on Twitter, and then Jacob Scholder. We all wait for the Kopyly group. Good question.
Can you state your name and answer the question?
John Sellers, from 1836 West Holt, Addison, Illinois.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, couldn't go ahead and answer the question.
We are looking for a May December openings. We're hoping that everything is closed up, the outside will be all done by mid-November, and if everything goes better than it planned earlier, we should, by the end of the year, be open.
You're the developer?
I'm the developer. I'm the developer.
I just want to commend the fact that there have been a lot of trying hurdles that you guys have had to go through, and I appreciate the fact that you guys have stuck to it, didn't that.
Well, we appreciate the fact of the city of McHenry being so gracious to us. I mean, cannot ask for a better city to work with. We're doing our best to try to keep as much of the inside historical, the beans and everything. We want to make Nancy very happy, I'm sure everybody knows who Nancy is, so we are doing our best with that, but you guys have been wonderful, Ross and Dave, I can't say anything more about you guys, but we are truly hoping to be open by the end of the year.
Great.
It's a great answer. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Real quick.
Go ahead.
Real quick, John, square footage inside the building, total once it's built out?
92, 13, 42, just under 1800 square feet, I think it is, 13 on the bottom, 40 on the bottom, and 9 on the top, I believe, yeah, on the top.
And the top will be?
Little mezzanine section.
Okay. Oh, will that be open to the public?
Yes.
Mezzanine, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comment?
Looking in, I've got a motion, so clerk, please cover all.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Sante?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Kopyly group, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, seven B is the zoning approvals for recently annexed property. Motion to approve an ordinance amending various zoning approvals for property recently annexed by the city. McHenry, Ross?
Thank you, mayor. So on August first of twenty-twenty-two, we annexed our first track of unincorporated packets within the city of McHenry. With that, staff was directed to go back and look at all of those properties and how they were being used at the time. So there are a couple, the ordinance tonight will cover properties that include McHenry Kinder Care, daycare center, several small agro tourism operations at Crystal Lake Road, the Terredash Law Offices, two public utility sites, an industrial warehouse facility on Southwest Corner, Cleant Drive, Valley Road, and a variety of other property actively farmed along the Valley Road. Plan and zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the requests. There were no objectors present at the hearing. Some of the requests were found in packets. And if you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve seven B as presented. Alderman Hardy?
To make the motion for seven D.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion by council. Alderman Miller?
I just want to thank you and your team and Cody for this process. I know that I was very involved with many of these on a personal level. And I've heard nothing but wonderful accolades about how the staff has treated our residents, trying to understand their use and to give them as much latitude as possible. There was a great deal of fear going into this process, the forced annexation. And I, I just can't thank you enough for how you've treated the residents and really had great communication with them. And I think that ordinance wraps it all together, so thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. I will put a lot of that on Cody. Cody has kind of spearheaded this whole thing and worked with the residents. And I, I haven't heard any negative feedback either, so we are happy with the process.
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, I'm very happy with this process too. When I read it, read through it, and I look at the minutes of the public hearings, no news is good news in my book because, you know, you know, there were no members of the public that were wishing to address any kind of negatives through the whole process. And the one quick question I got is, these zoning approvals, we could be seeing other pieces of this, other pieces of property coming for zoning changes if needed from previously being annexed into the city?
I think we covered most of, most of what we needed to cover in that first batch. Now, there is another batch of annexations that's coming. But I don't know how much we're gonna have to do there because that's the bigger subdivision to basically.
Yeah.
Do, and we, we don't own any, under any timeframe if they ever want to come to do this zoning?
They're, they're all welcome to come if they want to make changes.
Yeah.
You know, if, if the property, if the use ceases on a property, we can always revisit that.
Yeah.
You know, but at this point, we really looked at all of these properties and there was no negative impact to the surrounding properties or the city of McHenry. I think that's what made the residents happy is that, you know, we worked with them, surround continues the property they've been using it for for fifty years.
A very positive option that we gave to them.
Thank you. Alderman?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the fact that a lot of these cases are out down Crystal Lake Road and that I'm happy to see a lot of these places wanting to remain the way they are considering with the expansion of the high school and all the changes that have been done over there. The traffic has really been, you know, quite escalated over the last six, eight months. And there is another little bit of development going on over there that hasn't opened up yet. And I hate to see all of these properties all of a sudden developed or Crystal Lake would handle all that traffic and installation. Something that we need to look at for the future through as far as where we're gonna go with Crystal Lake Road. Because sooner or later, those properties will get redeveloped, you know that. And when it does, we should be ready as far as having a plan as far as transportation in that area. Thank you.
And Alderman?
I just wanted to again reiterate that I think Cody was the right person. He was able to articulate your value proposition of the city of McHenry because that was one of the biggest concerns. You know, you're just gonna suck us in and tax us. But Cody was able to really talk about the benefits that you're already receiving, even though you're not city, and the additional benefits that you will be receiving. And then just the idea of having a one-on-one conversation with those property owners, they were, they were so grateful. So again, I just want to make sure that we recognize our outstanding staff and the extra effort. This wasn't, this wasn't a small undertaking. It was huge and I know that because I was part of it, but it went really well.
Any other questions coming to the council? Alderman Strach?
I just reiterate what Alderman Miller is saying. I was here for that last batch. I came to the plan and zoning meeting just because I wasn't sure how much of the public would be here for that. And it was nice that there wasn't anyone here. Everybody that I spoke to about it, and, and as Alderman Miller said, it was, the staff did a great job of making sure that was all done well. When I walked in here, I anticipated seeing people in the gallery and there was nobody here, I was sitting with one other constituent, so worked out well. Thank you again for that.
John? All right. Clerk, please call them all.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Give me a second to catch up.
Been a long day, been a long day, man.
Next item on the agenda, seven C is a new facade grant program. Motion to approve and amend this facade grant program as presented. Director Martin?
Thank you, mayor. At the September sixth city council meeting, I presented a facade grant program and the council offered some suggestions. I brought the program back with some changes, expanded the area on which the program would be effective. It would be effective in the Tipp district downtown, so cover the immediate downtown areas, plus some areas adjacent to downtown and some of those side streets, also area on one twenty and on thirty-one as well. Noted on the guidelines that prevailing wage would be required for the facade grant and national franchises and chains would be excluded from the grant program. The intent is that the hundred thousand dollars would be budgeted next budget year, twenty-three, twenty-four, for this program. However, if somebody came forward this year and wanted to participate in the program, I would bring it forward and pose a budget amendment if the council was amenable to that. So if somebody wanted to do it this year, that would be how we can handle it this year, so. If the council has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And in this, and the last thing I'll say, this is intended for non-residential properties. Non-residential, I just want to state that as well. I don't think I stated that last time.
Thanks, sir. Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Thank you. How are you gonna advertise? You know, we want to get the word out and the C website isn't usually the best place.
Well, we, we, we will use social media. I have gotten a couple calls on it already. But I think word of mouth, we'll let people downtown know. So just word of mouth and go into businesses, letting them know. Like I said, a couple of people who own several businesses downtown have contacted me, so.
We must have the newsletter that goes out in the spring, we can make sure it goes in that. And also Doug does have a list of all the business emails, so he can certainly send that out as well.
Yeah, that was, I just wanted to follow up if we have emails or actual hard addresses for these areas? Because what I really appreciate what you did, Administrator Martin, is that you, you listen to us and that we're showing our constituents and our business owners that we are reaching out to different areas of the downtown areas. You know, we're going west, we're going south. We're not focusing on a couple of areas that everybody seems to hit me with that question, that why are we always there? Okay? So we are using that as long as we can get to those people. And I would highly recommend that we, if we have email addresses or their addresses, that we notify these businesses up and down, you know, major, these highways at other locations that is now available and even to the extent of opening up a, you know, a discussion with them or, you know, a face-to-face meeting either with us here at, at City Hall or actually at their business.
I will do that and we do have pretty, pretty good running list of email addresses.
Because they do need, I mean, I, I repeat myself, but they do need to know this and I don't. No offense, we just don't get the word out, you know, I don't, you know, social media, website, I get it, but we, we almost have to like knock on their doors and say, hey, this is available, you need to take a look at it. Because a lot of them don't, a lot of them don't see it, they're never notified, and, you know, they never even think about talking about this subject with you. Thank you.
Alderman?
Yeah. You know, the whole idea that the side grant program from years back has changed dramatically over the years now to what it is today. This isn't much different than just regular economic grant money that we've been giving out. A hundred thousand dollars, we used to have fifteen hundred dollars a year that we used to put in there twenty-five years ago. Granted, this place adds up, but up to a hundred thousand dollars. And, and if it really, really helps the city, it's one thing, but how much of this hundred thousand dollars a year is gonna wind up with, if you take a look at the uses that, that are, you know, they qualify, I mean, we're not just talking the building, but the area around the building. And are we talking just the fronts, front escape? Because that's basically what the side was for, was the front escape. It wasn't to ramp all new windows and doors in a, in a building or to pay for the regular maintenance of a building that should be done anyway. And that's, that's what bothers me is, not bothers me, but concerns me is the fact that it won't be taken totally advantage of. This should be for people that want to upscale what's there, not just upkeep what they have. I mean, and another thing that I think we need to put in here is the fact that I don't want to see anybody coming for, for grant money or things that have been sent letters from, from Ross's department is as far as the fact that they're having fractures on the coats. You know, if, if they have to do it anyway because of the fact that they haven't been maintaining it, I don't think the taxpayer wants to take and pay for something that takes a neglecting. Let's make sure that we use this, let's use it wisely and let's use it again for the betterment and upscale of, of the area that, as you go along and not just, you know, for people that, that want, you know, the money's there, so let's have one, you know. But use it wisely, that's all I worry about.
Alderman?
I think the grant program is going to be overwhelmingly a success. I, I think a hundred thousand dollars is nothing when you look at the number of buildings and businesses that can benefit from this program. It is all about marketing and getting the word out there and, you know, a direct campaign. We have a lot of businesses who are just finding their way out of COVID struggles and this money is gonna come perfectly timed where they've created a little nest egg to do that thing. And we don't have to match it all the way up to thirty on each project. Doug's gonna do a great job at, you know, reviewing and processing those. If we can spread that well far and wide, I think we've done a good thing to help our businesses resucceed.
Any other questions coming? Alderman?
Rush? What do we have to give out this year as far as economic development grants? Doug, Doug Kopey, yeah? I mean, what do we have, what do we give out?
I don't have the number up.
I'd take a ballpark.
You mean thirty?
I mean, thirty. Projects, I mean, we're, we're talking, what, five, ten, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand? I, I don't.
No, probably about thirty, I mean.
Up to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the grant we have now is, you, you apply and then a year later you get the grant money, not like this grant.
Well, tell me the differentiation between the two, please, explain.
One, this grant's solely for facade improvements. And it's, it's for specific areas that's filled out in the grant. The other is for retail sales tax generating businesses that generate at least a hundred fifty thousand dollars in sales a year. Now, it can be used for a facade or building improvement, or it can be used for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Either of the two things can be used for the grant money. And then you apply for the grant and then after a year, if you generate a hundred fifty thousand dollars in sales, you get the grant and then you have to maintain that sale for three years or else there's a clawback provision in that agreement.
Again, I, I take a look at some of the eligible expenses and the gutters and downsides, I mean, that's something that is required anyway on those buildings, Director Ross? Yes. I mean, you know, it's not uplifting, it's, it's just putting in or upgrading what's supposed to be there in the first place. Where is the incentives to uplift and have a higher scale look along the roadways other than, okay, now we're maintaining it? Now, we don't want to look like that just that, that, that the city is maintaining what they got. We want to upgrade and make sure that those that need to maintain their properties are maintaining their property properly. And I don't think the side grant is the way to do it, just giving money out like that, so.
I think many people are not gonna use.
I just, all I'm saying, I'm not against it, the program. All I'm saying is, is I think we need to be careful how we move forward with it so that we use it to the benefit of the benefit.
Any other questions, comments? None? Looking for a motion and a second? Alderman McClatchy?
Yes, I'll move to approve the seven D.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Clerk, please call them all.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda, discussion item two thousand twenty-three, city council regular meeting date. Administrator Moorefield is on the phone. Derek, can you hear us?
I'm on the, I'm on the phone, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Great. The only, the only thing I'll add to the last discussion, I just want to wrap this in all accounts and just remind you that all those applications will have to come before council also for review and approval, not just the staff approval, so they'll all come before council. This is, under this section of discussion, I know I put it on here, I get, council, usually what we do is write council ordinance with a listing of all the dates for, for city council meetings for the next year, usually in November, sometimes on the first or second meeting in November. But I wanted to bring some dating of the dates before council, give you a chance to have a discussion for next year and kind of think through. We don't have to make any decisions tonight, just something for the, Monty and I can use to come back, you with some dates. But what I provided to you in the packet are basically, except for July, which I'll come back to, is how the schedule would lay out for next year. And Alderman Santee called me today and we had a discussion about the dates that are on Tuesdays. So just to clarify, January third, February twenty-first, and September fifth are all recommended on this sheet for Tuesday meetings anyway because of the holidays, the, the city hall holidays that we have on the preceding Monday. So Monday, January second, we recognize it's New Year's Day, it's a day off. The twenty-first of February, the twentieth of February is President's Day, that's a Monday. And then obviously September fourth next year is Labor Day. So past practice, we've been to have those meetings on the successive, the next day, which is Tuesday. They have them on the week after, which is Monday, or just cancel them altogether like we have done in the past, especially for New Year's Day and the July, the July fourth Independence Day holiday. So this is the way it lays out for next year. And then for July, I wanted to highlight that the holiday next year for us is on the fourth, obviously, which is, you know, which is the, on the one day, Tuesday next year. And we would have to see, so obviously the, the end of the, the end to the hall will be open on Monday and then close again on Tuesday. So we, we can either cancel that meeting and put it off until the next week, which would be the tenth, or I suggest on here that we can have the meetings on the second, fourth, Tuesdays of July. Or I suggest on here that we can have the meetings on the second, fourth Tuesdays of July instead of the first and third. And the other thing that does, I guess, just a word of caution, if we, if we cancel the July third date and just have it on the seventeenth, that gives us, there's five Mondays in July. And so that's a pretty long stretch between June nineteenth and then the first meeting in August. We would just have one meeting over the seven week period. So it may be that we choose to meet on the tenth and the twenty-fourth. That way we're still two, you know, every other Mondays, just go at least that second and fourth for that one. So anyway, I just wanted to lay it out there, just a reminder from council. We can consider it again and talk about it again. You did give us an info, we can come back with the dates with an ordinance that we could still kind of massage before we approve it finally, but at least I wanted to give you the dates to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. We're over for discussion by council. Alderman.
Yeah, I just think as far as January, I don't see why we couldn't do what we suggested in July and make that, let's say, the ninth and and the sixteenth, well, not the sixteenth, ninth, the twenty-third, you still then have two weeks from the sixteen, or no, sorry, the twenty-third to February sixth. That to me would work out. I don't see a problem with that. The twenty-first, again, that's what President's Day. So we do it a week before or a week after, although that Tuesday would bother me one way or the other, but all I'm getting at is, is I don't see why we couldn't, I think it would make a lot more sense to have January changed. And as far as July, the tenth of twenty-fourth, like Administrator Moorefield said, that is a long stretch, you know, to go from the seventeenth on, so I'd go with the tenth of twenty-fourth on that. I think the more Mondays, because people are used to seven on Mondays, and the more we can stay on Monday, I think the better we all feel.
Thank you. I know you mentioned January. Derek, is it true that January is kind of a slow month? I know we've had these conversations in the past. I won't be in town on the third anyway, but I think we just cancel that Tuesday. I don't think we do the second and fourth Mondays on that month.
Yeah, definitely. I guess, I guess there's kind of a fourth option for some of these, especially for January, and that is that we've we've maintained a date and then just seeing how it is when we get to that date and, you know, choose to cancel it. You know, yes, the, the answer to your question, typically that might be here, especially around, you know, that Christmas to middle of January time is when people, you know, are taking time off or a lot of the stuff that we provide to council, you know, we're getting from developers or people that are petitioning council for certain things. Typically those items are due the Tuesday or Wednesday before a council meeting. And people just aren't around, you know, to submit those items in the last week of December or first week of January. So, you know, yeah, I mean, sure, could we, could we, you know, just have one in January? Yeah, and if we've done it in the past, for sure. You know, that's not going to be a problem either for schedule, the nineteenth and sixteenth, or whatever you guys want to do. And we could see what happens when we get to that and choose to cancel the first one. That's, that's pretty easy to do too.
Thank you. Alderman.
I'm a big fan of keeping our schedule the first and third Mondays unless there's a holiday. I think there is something to be said for consistency to our constituents. That's what we publish, that's what we put out there, and I think it's important that we maintain that schedule.
So what would you do on February twenty-first? Obviously, we wouldn't have a meeting on the twentieth, right? So would you say cancel that? Is that what you're getting at?
If there's no business to be had, I think.
And then just do a special meeting or something?
First of third, unless there's a holiday, and then if there's a holiday, we can reschedule it if we need to be here.
Okay. Any others? Alderman.
Yeah, we found in the past, and I think Administrator Moorefield was kind of alluding to that, it's quite a lot easier to schedule meetings now and cancel them later if there's no agenda that needs to be discussed rather than trying to put on a special meeting later.
Our goal would never put on, I mean, I would be put on a special meeting unless it's really important, right? But then a lot of people can't plan vacations, can't plan their, I mean, I would rather have a schedule, if we can get rid of a meeting, I'd say we get rid of a meeting.
But you understand the other side is that if we, it's easier to cancel the date than, you know, have to set it up and create it. I mean, I get the point, if, if the business is slow at certain times of year, January, February, okay. We could, we can always make that call, what, what do we need, thirty? How many, how many days do we need to officially cancel a meeting?
None, none they cancel.
None they cancel.
Yeah, either way you can do this, this is not a problem. Either way, you go.
Well, okay, to my point though, I prefer to just have the dates and let's bump them when, when we get close to those dates. You know, just to have them there, because then we can schedule, you know, our out of town vacation, whatever, business, whatever it is, but they're there and, and that, that's the way I see it. And and just food for thought, Director Moorefield and I had, excuse me, Administrator Moorefield and I had a discussion briefly. We can always set it up, I get it, I just, just understand and just say it just because it's there and we can use it when we have to as a committee of the whole meeting. And we can always schedule those, what our attorney Carter just said, we can move on those pretty quickly and, you know, and get, get in front of everyone else to make a critical vote for discussion. That's all I have, thank you.
Is any other comment? Go ahead.
I mean, if, if it's a holiday on a Monday, everyone's assuming it's going to be on a Tuesday. Just schedule, let's just find a way, there's this Administrator Moorefield presented, I mean, I just think that's, that's where we are. If, if everything's closed on a holiday, you just assume everything's going to happen the next day.
The only one I do suggest is January third. I think a lot of people are going, I mean, I, I don't know how many other committees this makes. I won't. So you're out there going to, I mean, that one's kind of.
Every. Then. You say legal.
It's going to be a fifteen minute meeting.
We can always schedule it and say, oh, we're, we're canceling it because we're getting it to Hawaii. I mean, we could, we could take a look. I, I think it'll probably find out pretty fast, but I don't know that we've had that first meeting in January for a couple of years.
No, I'm always on it.
Yeah. Yeah, but then we're, we're going, I was, excuse me, but we're going how long between the meetings? Because you're looking from December nineteenth to January sixteenth, almost a month. You're three days short of a whole month. So talking, what, twenty-eight days?
Who's in favor of deleting January third?
And keeping everything else?
And we keep everything else, I think, right? Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So majority is, all right. Derek, I guess you're not here, you didn't see here. So remove January third, so bring it back to removing January third and keep everything as is. I think July third, I'm going to see that, we're probably going to cancel that, but I'm, whatever, you make that decision, so. We can just bring it, bring it back that way. Got it?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports this evening? None? Mayor's report, the rise up, we're still working on numbers, we're still working on monies owed by artists and stuff like that, so I should have something shortly. I know we're over last year's profits, but obviously until we get everything in, we won't have a final number, and this one was a big one, so. Other than that, that's all I got. City Council comments? Alderman Santi?
Yeah, I briefly met with Culver Works Director Strange and we, we got a discussion about street, the street program for next year. And I just want to ask if, if we could, Director Strange, get an update for the next meeting regards to potential adjustments in the street program for next year.
Yes, we could do that, we'll prepare a discussion item. In general, the four point four million dollars that we budgeted, we came in well under, in terms of total program cost for this year, so we will be carrying over additional balance for, for next year.
Thank you. That's all. Any other? Go ahead.
Yeah, question from Director Pollard, the, we discussed tree ordinances and I just wondered if we're still moving forward with that.
Yeah, we're researching it.
Have you got any idea where we might be able to start bringing that forward to council at least through you or anything this type?
Yeah, within the next thirty days, I would say.
Great, great. All right, appreciate that.
No problem. Any other City Council comments? Motion and second to adjourn.
I just have a quick comment. I've been busy talking to directors and more, most importantly, Director Hobson. A resident who reached out to me about community gardens. So I know it's not the hottest item on his list, but Director Hobson is amazing and he's going to make room for it. Probably out at Peterson Farm. And what I suggested was that if we could find community champions, that takes the burden off of him. And I am going to help him get this off the ground. So thank you, Director Hobson. And of course, I also left a message and just got confirmation today, we will be doing a light up the city community contest again. So Andy, get your crap out of the garage, get it in the front yard, it's time. It's time. Because last year we had, how many entries did we have last year?
A lot. Not as many as we'd like.
Not as many as we wanted, but we got it off late. So this year we're going to get it off early and get it done right.
Awesome. But who was the person that reached out to you about that garden?
Steve.
Alderman. No.
The rap, that's one.
Steve Song or someone.
Yeah, so make sure, exactly, that you were talking about, no?
I don't have, I do have a thing actually.
No, it's okay. So just make sure you reach out to him because he's, no, okay. He's reached out to me recently, yes.
It's a different, different, the one you were talking about, your contact, the gentleman I talked to, it's a different.
Okay.
Both of those individuals.
Get them together and they can.
Do their thing.
They can do it, yeah. Okay, perfect. Alderman.
So if I remember correctly from my planning, it's only because we have a five acre parcel to the west of Peterson Farm as well, correct? By, right, a little bit.
Yes, on the north side of the.
On the north side of. Which would be another fantastic place. That is part of our farm. Okay. So that, the, we just bought all of that lease, all of the Hickory Creek Farm.
That's across the street, it's on that lease too?
Yeah. The one, it's by the old lake.
North side, north side. You know, there's something, I went back there to see about parking and I almost got.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
For the.
Part of, yeah, part of the.
Really.
We have to pull it off of that, amend that. So again, I, I don't know if that, if that property could be utilized for that, but I just remember when we were looking at some of the city's properties at that time, might be a way to utilize some of that property as well. I don't know what it's earning us, and that farm is probably not a done.
No, and there's actually.
Part of their operation, that they use it as their aid to cut that down so that they.
There's a drive between that, so it almost separates.
Does it?
Yeah.
I haven't.
Right? There, there's a drive that separates, it goes all the way down to a house.
Yeah.
So it separates from Peterson to that five acres.
So the gentleman I spoke to has been instrumental in the Island Lake project. And if you look at where the Island Lake project is, it's on that really silly triangle piece with the helicopter. It's not a real big piece of property and they provide forty raised gardens. So I, I don't know that we need five acres of these things, but if we could work together and get ten, and Bill showed me a picture tonight, there's already four of them out there. You know, I don't want to be overzealous on our first effort out that it's not a success. So I don't know if, you know, I'll leave it to Bill, but I think we could probably accommodate what the need is where we have four, four already?
Four to six. I mean, there's, there might be six, there, everything's kind of overgrown. We used it for the Victory Garden as part of the day of years in Farm a few years back. And then again, the garden fell, was retained for a while and they just, the raised ones are still there, they just need to be cleaned up, so.
So I'll champion this. I'll work, I'll work with the guys and see if we can't get something moving and shaking.
Sounds good, thank you. Alderman. Now I'll motion to go to executive session. Thank you. Yep. Executive session for the setting of the price for sale or lease of property owned by public body, I L C S, at one twenty-two C six. Second, by Alderman Santi. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Shrek?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glenn?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller? Alderman Santi?
What was it?
Alderman.
Here.
Alderman.
Anyone? Alderman. Alderman. Alderman.